Okay, um, the agenda. This is the agenda. Yes, it is correct. It's in probably yes. Any, any motion to accept the agenda as presented?
Make the motion to approve the agenda as presented.
And second? Motion made by Diamond and seconded by Don to accept the agenda as written. All those in favor, sing a clap by saying aye.
Aye.
Vote. So move. Action on the minutes. Those are included in your packet and it was from the Monday over eighth meeting. Make the motion to accept minutes. Okay, motion made by Don and seconded by Karen. All those in favor, sing a clap by saying aye.
Aye.
Vote. So move. Action on the vouchers. Pierce. Yes, I'd like to make a motion to approve vouchers, probably three hundred fifty-five thousand one hundred sixty-four dollars and eleven cents as presented.
I'll second.
A motion made by Mike and seconded by Diamond to accept the vouchers as presented. All those in favor, sing a clap by saying aye.
Aye.
Vote. Bring on some move. Public participation. We have, um, one person signed up, Sean Holmes.
I was gonna wait, I'm sorry, I'm not sure the, the way it works. I was gonna wait until after the, uh, the translations.
Uh, we have to have the agenda for public participation prior to any action taken. So I think now would be the appropriate time to speak if you've had some issue with, with the right way.
No, I'm not in issue though. I'm with right way.
Yep.
Oh. You better know. For the matrix, he has no problem. Okay, that changes things just a little bit then. My apologies, Sean. Sing on, um, we will move on. Some government reports. Hannah or Mike?
Um, so, our student council, we're continuing to get ready for our blood drive, which will be on November fourteenth, I believe. Um, we're also getting our new laptops this week, which is pretty exciting. Everyone's really excited to get them and try them out.
And other news around the school, the history club trip leaves tomorrow for Charleston and the FFA trip for the FFA club leaves for Indianapolis on Wednesday.
Very good, thank you. Legislative report. Sir Burwick, do you have any good news about the famous districts coming earlier in the year?
Uh, we'll get that till, until it starts. The trust fund commission began last month and will be meeting in November, on November fourteenth. I've sent out all the super community districts that I represent. And it looks like, um, the one thing that might change is we're gonna give authority, more authority to the people who invest the funds, uh, so that they, so that they feel like they need to invest in more investigative role for funds that they could possibly do, that could be restricted, um, in their authority on how they can invest and the all the interests of them investing. So that's probably coming next week, so I hope some of our super communities can come and weigh in on the authority we're gonna give them. Also expect in that session, there was a bill floating in the end of the session from the Wisconsin Psychologists Association wanting to change standards in Wisconsin to meet standards nationwide, to try to get more, um, school psychologists, um, myson, uh, because the fact that there's a shortage in another part of the state and there's shortages in, uh, or, uh, counties as well. So that's probably gonna come over on us. I was at the dairy task force meeting today and, um, old structures, what is our education, how we can change education in dairy industry. So I suspect forthcoming is going to be some critical changes that won't cost us too much money, but will be brought forth by different dairy groups to modernize dairy, um, financial aspects in dairy industry, opportunities in dairy industry, because I felt that the, um, the schools haven't been able to keep up with the changes. There've been so many changes in the last ten years, school programs haven't kept up. So, uh, legislators who are there, I, I was there today and Representative Holmes was there today, and they're looking to ask to introduce legislation, hopefully in that session after we get everything, uh, this is the fourth one I attended, so, um, I'm trying to deal with all the concerns and so maybe legislation forthcoming and I think like the changes that are taking place. And, uh, this is really a change. The last Thursday, the tech leaders of Wisconsin, Wisconsin Education Technology Leaders presented with the board, um, for my, they're going out to Washington City lobbying for, um, funds for technology, so I much appreciated that and I like the work from the board. So, that's what's going on.
Anything else? I believe there's a lecture coming up here soon. Um, as I always do, um, make sure you exercise your right to get out and vote. I'm not concerned who you're gonna vote for, just make sure you get out and cast a ballot. Thank you. Uh, next is a presentation on anti-bullying by student folks and Ben Kramer.
October is bullying prevention month and the purpose of our presentation is to make you more aware of some of the things that we're doing and, um, the resources that we're tapping into to do what we are doing. Gee, thanks. Um, yeah, according to board policy, the board encourages the promotion of positive interpersonal relations between members of our school community. Bullying prevention is exactly that. It's promoting positive interactions with all the goals that work with our children. And so how are we doing that? There's kind of an underlying theme, we don't always use these terms with them, but this is our kind of underlying theme, is that we have a circle of cur, we have a circle of control and we have a circle of influence. And that circle of control is, is all that we can control and generally that's just ourselves. But then there's a circle of influence, that we can influence lots of things around us. So we want kids to understand what they can control and what they can influence. We understand that if students feel safe and are in a predictable environment, they are much more, uh, likely to succeed academically, socially, and emotionally. Uh, there's lots of research to, to, um, support that. We want students to achieve academically, but we want them to enjoy their twelve years or thirteen years that they're in our school district. So how we approach this is kind of a three-legged stool. Uh, the first leg of that stool is universal expectations. We want consistency, that's a real good thing. This is a proactive piece that we do, um, at the start of the year and throughout the year. We want classroom routines, we want hallway behavior, explain, do we want playground expectations? Um, classrooms spend a lot of time at the start of the year explaining what the expectations are in the high school, it might be in their syllabus. Um, in kindergarten, they're practicing their lineups and their structure of how you get another pencil or sharpen your pencil. Um, that leg of that stool is based on research and part of that comes through our PBIS. The second leg of the stool is teaching and reteaching. Most students do not come to school with the idea that they want to be disruptive. Um, we, this, this leg of the stool is far more responsive. So, we know that some kids need more practice and some kids need more reteaching of those skills that we want them to do, to use. Um, that responsive practice is oftentimes based on data. So we might look at our data and say, oh, look at, we're having a lot of problems, um, at the high school between first and second hour. So we wanna, we wanna target our supports between first and second hour or line up, um, in second grade when they're going to lunch. The third leg of the stool is resiliency. Um, you, we know we can't control everything, we don't, we can't influence everything, but at some point in time, things are gonna happen to us, um, and we need to be able to respond to that. So that resiliency piece is there. That is proactive and it is responsive. The proactive piece comes from our guidance lessons, our second step, our health teachers teach, um, skills having to do with resiliency, but it's also embedded in the curriculum. So for instance, if we were teaching Romeo and Juliet, be a great opportunity to have a conversation in class about how, how you make choices and how you can decide what you have control of and what you have influence of. That three-legged stool is so important to have all three legs strong. And so we work on that environmental piece, we work on teaching skills, but then we also really wanna focus on that resiliency as well.
I just want to know that your brand already died.
Yes.
Just kidding. All right, um, just to capitalize on what Mrs. Pope said, um, there was a handout that was at the back table, um, that looked like this. And, uh, one of the things that we're doing as a district in our PBIS team, so each of the three members are representative, uh, we meet as a team, PBIS remembers positive behavior intervention and supports. One of our goals this year is to go over, um, with not only the staff, students, or not only staff and students, but families as well, on what bullying is and what it is not. So this first handout here kind of explains, like, when someone does or says something unintentionally hurtful and they do it once, you know, that, that's rude. When someone says or does something intentionally hurtful and they do it once, you know, that's just outright mean. When someone who says or does something potentially hurtful and they keep doing it, even when you tell them to stop or show them that you're upset, then that's bullying. So one of the reasons that, uh, we're using a document like this is we wanna make sure that not only, um, families, but students, we validate the fact that they do have a concern because obviously they've been hurt in some way. It's not always bullying, but it's important to point out that whatever that behavior is, sometimes it's rude and sometimes it's mean. So we're validating what could happen and then deciding how we're gonna, going to proceed. Uh, the second part in that handout, pages three and four, is the, um, Mrs. Pope's touched on this too, but the social, emotional, um, learning competencies that our Student Services Team focuses on. And there's one example in here that talks about one of the competencies is self-management. So what that looks like to a first, to a third, first grade to third grade, is that learners will be able to, with adult guidance, demonstrate a variety of strategies to manage strong emotions. So that's something that they might be working on in first, second, and third grade. Remember those days? Then, moving on into the eleventh grade onto adult, it would look something like this. Learners will be able to understand and explain how their expression of emotions can influence how others respond to them. So internalizing how you are responding to someone, you know, it might affect, uh, the conversation that you're having. Lastly, what we're doing back to, this is, this is something that we're doing all year long. Uh, more importantly, this month, um, some of the activities that schools are doing to recognize that it is, um, the work of October, uh, we have Unity Day, which is October twenty-fourth. One of the ways that we can show unity in our schools is by wearing orange. Some schools, uh, because we have conferences this week, uh, are choosing to do that on Tuesday, others are doing it on the actual day, which is the twenty-fourth. We have some mixing up lunches going on in some of our schools, encouraging our students and staff to break down some of those barriers and lunch with people that you don't always sit by. Uh, we have Project Unity Day at the middle school, um, kindness challenge at a couple of our elementary schools, and there's more to that list, I just wanted to highlight a few. And, that would be all. Thank you.
Okay. Any questions from the straight ones? A lot of, a lot of things going on in the district. Okay, next on the presentation, agenda is report on the October eleventh, community, Sunday's planning workshop. Um, Joe Martin, who was, uh, is with us tonight, but he's probably talking to teachers because of parent teacher conference, so he's doing his, his parenting duty, um, tonight. So Karen, would you like to go over what was discussed on the eleventh?
Sure. Um, well, I think the biggest, if you haven't already heard, the biggest takeaway, um, from that meeting on the eleventh is the Strategic Planning Committee Board challenged our architect and builders of JP, Ellen, and PRA to come up with a solution that touched as many schools in the district as possible for a price tag of fifty-nine million nine hundred and ninety-nine thousand and ninety-nine cents. And I think, did anyone, did today we talk about that about? Are we going through those today?
Um, no.
No? Okay.
I think the, uh, the meeting on Thursday, my station?
Thursday.
Um, there are some, um, there's some options that we've looked at in the past, um, some more, um, pricing has been revisited, uh, how to accomplish the most we can with that, um, under sixty million dollar figure. So, uh, I believe there are four, four options that we can look at, and then there's kind of a, an aleckhart menu to that, what, what this X costs to be included with, with a, with a specific project. So I would certainly, um, encourage everyone to attend on, on the next Strategic Planning Committee meeting. Uh, Joe, uh, very timely, um, coming in, anything you'd like to add to that other than what Karen, you pretty much came up with that here?
Sounded like a wonderful summation.
The only other thing I would add is that, um, I think not only was that meeting on the eleventh, but the one prior to that, probably two of our most productive meetings that we have had as a strategic planning committee, um, as, with community input. So I think, you know, I think we certainly are moving in the right direction, um, and hopefully we will have a solution here soon.
Okay, anything from the other board members?
I don't know, I'm a huge supporter of the conference. So I know there's people, a lot of people watching from one hour, there's some people in the audience. Karen said it sounds very productive, a lot of different voices are being heard, and that's really important. And the more voices that are heard through this process, the more that you can feel that, that truly, truly encourage, if you're here, bring a friend, or if you're watching at home, come on in. Um, because I, I, it's been really incredible what we've been able to achieve in such a short amount of time, and I wanna keep seeing that go forward.
Okay, and I agree with that as well.
Okay. Just, you know, we, we finished that homework, um, it's complete, uh, you will have a draft of it, ideally sometime tomorrow, so you have a day to look at before the meeting.
Thank you. And that'll be sent to each one of us. Okay. Moving on to item four, which is a finance committee report. Mike, Jerry, you were gonna give us a little update on the budget, I believe, first.
Yes, thank you, Mike. Uh, it's been a great deal of fun that we presented you the final two thousand eighteen and nineteen budget. Uh, the budget was presented now twice to that Board of Education, once in early August for preliminary adoption, again, at the annual meeting, and then now tonight, after all the numbers are final, uh, for final approval. Mary Ellen and her staff put together a very detailed memo, that is a new packet, that explains the final numbers that are in. But I think most importantly, we'd like to just share, um, that why we believe that this budget is a very good one, not only for our students, but for our community as well. Uh, this is a budget that invests two full-time special education aides to service a growing special needs population. Uh, it is a budget that invests more than three hundred thousand dollars of state-awarded grant monies to make our schools safer. Uh, it is a budget that improves our transportation to eliminate the hub at Northside, uh, to attempt to limit the amount of time that our students spend in transit. And it is a budget that puts now new laptops and new iPads in the hands of our students, and it lowers annual costs to taxpayers. But perhaps most importantly, uh, for our taxpayers, it is a budget that decreases the local levy, and it is a budget that decreases the mill rate by sixty cents. And so the Finance Committee, after reviewing all of the highlights of the two thousand eighteen, nineteen budget, for an unanimous consensus to bring forward the budget to you tonight for final adoption and approval.
Thank you, Jerry. Uh, we have two motions we need to approve. The first one is, uh, we have more approval of two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen, original funding budget as presented. Second? Okay. Motion made by Mike and seconded by Joe. Any discussion? Bring on, we call for a vote, Paul. Start with you, Karen.
Yes. Sitting, yes.
Yes.
Yes. Tom? Yes, Mike? Yes, Brian? Tom? Yes. And, and, second motion. Second motion is, I approve for the district a tax levy of fourteen million three hundred fifty-one thousand five hundred seventy-four dollars. The levy for current school year operations with a hundred and eight dollar levy for prior year tax levy chargebacks with levy of non-referendum debt with, that was zero. With seventy-one thousand three hundred dollars levy for referendum debt and for two hundred fifty-three thousand four hundred four dollars levy for county services, for a total levy of fourteen million six hundred fifty-six dollars, thousand three hundred eighty-six dollars. Three hundred eighty-six dollars. I'm gonna read that again, that's a little. Fourteen million six hundred fifty-six thousand three hundred eighty-six dollars for a mill rate of seven eighty-one eighteen. I would just like to say that it's pretty incredible that with the added services that we're being able to provide our students and our mill rate keeps going down. We're at seven eighty-one, and Jerry, do you have any, any numbers with some of our neighboring districts on what their mill rate is at?
Yes, I do, actually. Uh, I will tell you that for district residents who might happen to, I should say, non-district residents, but for example, Whitewater, was at eleven fifty-two last year when we were at April. Now, I don't have all the other mill rates this year because they have not been, all of their budgets have not been passed on, they've been certified by DPI, but we are unequivocally one of the lowest in Rock County and the region there.
And that's, uh, that's off to the, to the business office and everyone else putting together a budget that improves the, our services to our students and costs the taxpayer less money for mill rate. So, um, any other discussions? Um, Diamond, we'll start with you this time.
Do I have a discussion?
No, no, you both.
Yes.
Brian? Yes. Mike? Yes. Tom? Yes. Karen?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Next item, Mike? Um, we also discussed the short-term, short-term borrowing. Um, there, there's some people feel that, um, we should try and get our fund balance up so we don't have to short-term borrow, and I think we all think that's a great, great goal, but we don't, you know, people at our committee anyhow, we didn't feel that we should be cutting services to put in fund balance. We feel every opportunity to build fund balance, we need to build fund balance, but, uh, we just don't want to, uh, commit to cutting, you know, hundreds of thousands of dollars to build up that fund balance in the short term. That, uh, I would take a little bit longer, but, uh, to get there, so we're, we're hoping to get there.
Can I cover just a bit?
Um, there was just discussion, no action on that one? Right, this discussion. Okay.
Is there, so, my line of work is take any organization, there's always waste. Um, has there been any consideration of going through the various departments and identifying waste?
It wasn't part of this discussion.
Okay, yeah, 'cause I, the only reason why I say that is definitely I don't think anybody wants to take services away or, or something from the, um, you know, maintenance and capital improvement, but, um, there's always opportunities to save money, uh, reducing your efficiencies and waste and some of that, and I guess that's kind of what I was hoping to, to suggest, but, um, okay. Uh, that was just another way we can, you know, potentially find some, some extra dollars and go look at, uh, that, that fund balance.
I would probably argue too with that, um, that some other restructuring, uh, across like that administrative level, was to kind of try to help be able to go through and fine-tune departments and realign people and make sure that that's happening and efficiencies are happening. And I know Mary Ellen, when you talked about that, I think in August, tell us something that we had talked about. So I know prior conversation, it has been, um, a discussion on, on why we've realigned or why the administration wants to realign and what they're doing in the finance department as well. But I don't, it wasn't part of the conversation last week, but I, I know we've talked about that before.
You know, does anybody know what the specifics was for that realignment?
If you could do that, that would be interesting. And I think we also need to look at the efficiency of departments as well, and it's, it's not necessarily always a dollar and cents, it's the efficiency of public departments as well.
Yeah, and I would argue that the more efficient that a department runs, the more costly.
The more efficient, the more costly.
No, I said the more efficient a department, um, runs, the more costly it is.
Safer, yeah. Okay. Any other discussion on the short-term borrowing? No, that one's about good, I think. Okay. And your last one? Uh, the update on the five-year capital maintenance, folks. We have our, some of the, uh, that's called passing the buck.
That's right, I appreciate it. Thank you all for the opportunity to talk tonight. Uh, this, uh, presentation is just a recap on all of the summer projects that we did in the two thousand eighteen, nineteen fiscal year. Uh, these are the projects that you guys would have approved, uh, late February, so it was a lot in the making, I guess he's done. Uh, just a brief, uh, that's the next person, there you go. Uh, just a little brief history on the funding. Uh, prior to the operational referendum, passing the budget that the district had annually was four hundred fifty thousand dollars. Uh, with the passage of the operational referendum, we were able to increase that money, uh, to make more improvements in the schools. And the next slide, uh, shows the annuals, uh, totals that we were able to put into the buildings, specifically two thousand nineteen, uh, we did almost nine hundred thousand dollars in capital maintenance projects. Also an additional, almost one hundred and forty thousand dollars in DOJ's safety grant number one, and we're just recently awarded another hundred and ninety-two-ish, Jerry, is that right? Hundred and ninety-two-ish, so that annual total will actually be larger. Uh, some of the projects that we did, uh, West Elementary received a new parking lot through Amar Park and traffic flow improvements for parents to pick up. I know Marc isn't here right now, but we've had numerous discussions that that, uh, that project is a tremendous hit. Parents, staff, students all feel safer, both that drop-off and pickup times. Uh, Consolidated got a significant facelift this summer. Uh, in June, they got the entire interior of the building repainted, and once that project was completed, they got their lines replaced, and those lines were put to use last week in a soft lockdown, and everything worked, uh, the reports there were, uh, great. And this just shows some of the fore and afters of, uh, how that space was also brightened up and the increased functionality of, uh, window treatments for them out there. At Northside, they also received a secure entry sequence. They, them in the middle school received that, leaving only the high school and Consolidated left with the projects like that. They also got replacement concrete at the main entryway. That concrete was all broken up and, uh, worn in many places, and there were significantly tricky hazards around. Shows, uh, what conditions were like on the left and the new paths going into the front of the building on the right. Uh, at the middle school, they were the last school to get, uh, EDC controls installed. They were still under the MAD controls, which is a, a very archaic, inefficient way of controlling your building's HVAC system. Uh, they also received a secure entry sequence, and the picture shown on the right shows a student actually using that. Uh, at the high school, a very large aesthetic and great improvement, in my opinion, was, uh, the painting and replacement flooring in the cafeteria. Uh, that project was just over a hundred and twenty thousand dollars, and, you know, the picture on the left shows, you know, some of the damaged flooring towards the tail end of last school year, you're actually able You're actually able to kind of walk around and pick up floor tiles if you so chose to. Picture on the right shows the completed paint job and flooring. One of the largest projects we did this summer was the renovation of three special ed classrooms in the basement here in the high school, as well as the conversion of a special ed classroom into a second ID classroom. A project total of just over $216,000. Get some during pictures there just to show how actually extensive that renovation was. It was complete removal of all existing walls, all existing floors to basically start from scratch there. Picture on the left there shows just about done, and picture on the right shows it fully completed. And the high school track was the last large-scale project that we did. You guys are no stranger to it, the high school track was in really tough shape, and this last season, they actually had to practice on asphalt. Picture on the left is one you've seen before when Brian Hamel presented kind of our existing conditions. Picture on the right shows the track project in progress. That was actually a fascinating project to watch happen, something you definitely don't see every day. And this picture shows three students enjoying the new track service. That picture is called Abby Hurwors. And I just want to thank you for your support in supporting the funding of these projects. It's starting to go a long way in getting schools back up to speed here, so thank you.
Thank you very much. And again, you can see that the maintenance department has been doing a lot of work. They've done a lot of work of safety as far as the drop-off points between east and west and the clear entrances and things of that nature. So even with the limited number of dollars that we have, granted, it's been increased from the operational referendum, but we still have to maybe accomplish a lot of things. Okay, any other report? The next one is transportation committee report on discussion of possible action on the 2018 through 2023 Go Right Way transportation contract. And again, Sean, I apologize. I thought you were a parent that was concerned about the services of Right Way, and I picked that wrong, so Karen, would you like to start the report?
I unfortunately was not able to attend the meeting and took up a little off the bus, so I'm not sure if somebody from finance was able to come.
I'll step into that for Karen. So, yeah, we were discussing the contract with Right Way, which is, I should say Go Right Way, I'm sorry, that's up for renewal. That's a five-year contract we do with them with some of the base rates negotiated annually. And administration walked us through some of the ins and outs of what gets discussed and what gets added to that. Right Way has gone through some changes with their company, but in a positive manner. The regional person and the local person that we're dealing with has been very receptive, instrumental in implementing some of the changes that we've done with the transportation hub and the elementary kids going directly home from school and so forth. So we're in a good working relationship with Right Way and would like to continue that. And I'll do the motion if there's any other questions that anybody has, but maybe we put the motion on the table and discuss it with you. So I will move to approve the 2018-23 Go Right Way transportation contract as presented.
Second motion. Motion made by Joe and second by Mike. Is there any discussion? Sign on, move to roll call, hold on just one second.
I'm sorry. I don't see anything in my packet, maybe I've probably overlooked it as far as any documentation on the contract.
That's in board docs?
Okay.
In the executive part of board docs?
Okay.
Is the actual contract?
Okay, I did miss it. Okay, thank you. I just wanted to be corrected. Thank you.
Any other questions? Roll call, both, Karen?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes. Tom, yes, Mike?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Diamond?
Yes.
Okay. After that, I'm sorry. Thank you, Karen. Thank you, Mike. Six on new business, action on the 2018-19 open enrollment alternative application. And I believe we have one in and two out, and one of the out has never been a student at Northside.
That's right.
Move to approve the 2018-19 open enrollment alternative applications as presented?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Both?
Both.
Discussion on possible action on job descriptions. Jerry, would you?
Yes, these job descriptions, in accordance with our policy, were presented to the resources committee on October 10th and are here tonight for your approval. All of the job descriptions were sent out in email from Kieran Croft's team today from our community resources department and staff recommendation for you, as well as have the resources committee to approve as presented.
Do you have any questions?
I just have a comment and probably a request. So I know that Chris Tookinberg sent these out on October 9th, or at least some version of them. The, there's 13 job descriptions total, and they weren't sent out until 1155. And to be quite honest, I haven't had an opportunity to actually go and review these to see if there had been any changes or anything like that. So I'd like to request that we delay the action or vote until our next board meeting so we all have a time to take a look at them.
Were there any changes from the ones that were sent out, excuse me, by Chris and?
No, the original that was sent out was Chris's first email. I just sent it today just so you would have it fresh in your email, because the other one was sent out previously, but it was the same email that Chris sent out.
So there's no changes?
No, there are no changes.
I think it's still to have some time to take a look at them.
Okay, we have a motion to delay this. Do I have a second? This is table? This is table? Here, I have a motion in second. All those in favor of tabling this until later meeting, signify by saying aye.
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 I didn't get a chance to look at them.
Oppose? Name? Okay, it will be put on the next agenda.
Mike, will you second?
Yes, I will. I guess just for future, when we get things sent to us, it's our responsibility to look at them, and if we have any questions prior to the meeting, that would be the time to get clarification instead of waiting till the night of the meeting and saying you didn't have a chance to look at them. So I think it's the responsibility of board members when they get memos from the administration that they should look at them in a timely fashion so we can have our questions answered before the meeting.
I agree with you. We also request that the board packet be sent out prior to Friday, before the board meeting.
I send it out as quickly as I get all the information to me, and I'm usually...
And there could be committee meetings that we, like, for example, we charge on Friday?
Right. A lot of times, you know, we don't get the information until Friday, and if one of the board members is leaving for vacation like a weekend on a Friday, they typically don't, they don't get an opportunity to review the material before the meeting.
I guess again, it's the responsibility of a board member to make sure they look at the material when they receive it.
So I'm assuming that request is denied? Didn't say that.
It depends, I guess it depends on the material that's coming in, you know, where it's coming from, be it, you know, the budget information that was all, you know, hurriedly working on because of when the numbers of the A came in, you know, our numbers, we wouldn't have had, because there wouldn't have been anybody to get it out faster than Friday for the information that was in there.
Certified numbers from the state that come until October 15th, so staff would, Mary Ellen in particular, a lot of very long nights getting the numbers down so that they could be ready for the finance committee meeting on the 18th, maybe we have an opportunity to look at it. We certainly can work with whatever timeframe that you want to, but also understand that that may limit our ability to get some things to action.
Absolutely. And I think that's probably okay, in my opinion, you know, as long as, I think we have to delay and making sure that everybody has an opportunity to see stuff and review it. I think it's better to have an informed vote than just kind of going blow.
But it's also best that we have up-to-date facts. And in some cases, it may be Friday. Instead of putting it out earlier with incomplete facts or not verified facts. Again, I guess I'm fine with getting the information on Friday, but the rest of the board members, Friday before a Monday meeting is sufficient enough time to digest any information given the administration.
So far, it's been fine for me, and I trust that they're doing their best to get it as soon as they got it.
It looks to me too, today's information, I was driving on the road, so I didn't get a chance to read it, and normally, normally I did, but today I couldn't, that's why. I thought today I could, but it's better to wait, but normally, Friday's okay, we could have, Friday night, Saturday night, Sunday night, Monday, you can look at it.
I'm not, I didn't get a chance to.
Mike?
So we got more time. Okay. Right on, Diamond?
Yeah, I think the information there that's ready before, I understand that on Thursday we had two meetings, and the committee meetings were not attended, so I don't know, which had a lot of information. So I think it's situational or circumstantial that sometimes it's going to play the game that we have to get it on Friday and we don't really need to work. Other times, if we have a week that the meetings were prior are on Monday or Tuesday, then that's, I mean, I'm not a chair, so I don't have the responsibility of providing information to Kim, so I'm speaking kind of out of context here, but the chair has got the information in, and Kim has it. I don't think she intentionally is going to pull it from us to make our weekends bond for the board after meetings. So I might, and we just go, just, we got to try our best as board members to get communication and realize that sometimes it's not always going to be ideal, and we got to read it, and then it's not opportunistic.
Okay. Thanks for everyone's input. Moving on, miscellaneous action on the staffing report. And I believe we have one contract in place and one return.
Make a motion that we accept the staffing report as presented?
Second. Motion made by Karen, the second by Joe, to accept the staffing report as, and all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Both. We must move. Action on Gibson donations. Again, the broken record plays, $3,265.29. The community is amazing. That's so amazing. I'll make a motion to accept the Gibson donation as gratitude. A second. Motion made by Mike and second by Don to accept the donations in the amount of $3,265.29 as gratitude. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both, sign on, so move. Upcoming boarding committee meetings. Kim, do we have any, or Jerry?
Just a couple to note. This coming Thursday, October 24th, we have a strategic planning committee at 6:30 right here in the library. On November 2nd, we have the resources committee at 1:00 PM at district office, and then on November 12th, the possibility of a policy committee at 5:30, and November 12th is our next very scheduled school meeting in the red house.
Okay. I would entertain the motion for me. I also move. Second.
Okay. Motion made by Joe and second by Don. Favorite, you know, those in favor, please, by saying aye.
Aye.
Both. Thank you all for coming.